Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, November 14. If you are watching live on Monday, November 14, we encourage you to call in if you have any comments or questions. Our calling number is 769-1677. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for two weeks from today, Monday, November 28, at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00. But prior to that, one week from today, Monday, November 21, at 7:00 PM, we have a special meeting which is the public hearing on our master plan update. So more on that later. But the most important activity we have tonight is the appointment of a new police chief. So let me just move to the podium. I've been involved here in the government of the Village of Pleasantville now for 15 years, and it has often been clear to me that the folks who live here and the folks who work here are knit together in ways that I didn't fully understand until I occupied the seat I now occupy, and I know I can speak for my colleagues in saying that. And so for that reason, it is a very special night for the Village of Pleasantville, when we have the opportunity to appoint Eric Grußner as our new police chief. Eric predates me, although sadly, I'm older than he is. He arrived in the Village of Pleasantville as a police officer in 1994, and he was promoted to sergeant in 2006. He was promoted to lieutenant in 2012. Four years later, in 2016, it gives us enormous, enormous pleasure to anoint Eric Grußner as the new chief of the Pleasantville Police Department. We have a roomful of your colleagues who have worked with you for years and know the stuff you're made of. A shout out and a thanks to Carl Fugienzi and Chief Oliva from Mount Pleasant, our neighbors also here to honor you on this occasion. So I invite Eric and his family to come forward for the oath of office. All right, which one wants to be police chief? Eric, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Eric Grußner.
I, Eric Grußner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the codes of the Village of Pleasantville.
And the codes of the Village of Pleasantville.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police chief.
The duties of the office of police chief.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
We'll ask Eric's wife to take on the hazardous duty.
Get him back now for everything. One quick oops.
Welcome to our new chief. Thank you so much for stepping into this role. We have every confidence that you will be a great chief, and we have so much appreciation not only for what you do, but for all the men and women on the Pleasantville Police Department. So I invite you to make a few comments.
Good evening, Mayor Shear, members of the Village Board of Trustees, Administrator Dwyer, interested Pleasantville residents, friends, colleagues, Mom, Jessica, Beckett, Kai. First, let me say that I am greatly humbled by the outpouring of support that I have received since word of my promotion first became public. I was extremely grateful for the opportunity when I was asked to take over the department, and I am honored for the faith and encouragement that so many people have expressed so far. In addition, I'm looking forward to working with the board and the village administrator on the critical issues we will face in the future. I have already had the opportunity to see the board earn the trust that the residents have placed in them by making difficult, responsible decisions with the best interest of the village as their only guiding principle. I am honored that they in turn have placed some of that trust in me. In addition, I'm happy for the opportunity to say a few words tonight. Police work is often a silent profession. We are expected to be strong and stoic, and we are rarely asked our opinions for public consumption. Tonight, I'm thankful for these few minutes to share my thoughts on what I see as the state of our department, as well as the bright future I believe it has. So, to the residents of Pleasantville, I have said on many occasions and to anyone who will listen, that this department is comprised of the best group of people, top to bottom, that I have ever worked with. I don't mean this to diminish those who have come and gone. Some of the best cops I have ever met were previously employed by the Pleasantville Police Department. However, today, as I stand before you, I have been blessed with a roster of officers that are all smart and capable. I do not worry how the members of your police department are conducting themselves. I am confident that every call or situation is being handled by an officer in whom I, and by extension you, can have faith. In addition, we will continue to train and prepare for all manner of hazards and situations, and to strive to provide the best possible police service 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Our professionalism will not allow us to rest on what we have accomplished. Police work has changed in the 22 years that I have been here in a variety of ways. From investigations to counterterrorism, to assisting persons with disabilities or those in crisis, smart practices will continue to become standard procedures. And lastly, to the men and women of the Pleasantville Police Department. As each of you know and live every day, police officers are of the community -- oh, gosh. Not above the community. Relationships between a community and its police department are built one interaction at a time. Every opportunity to engage someone can have a positive outcome. Our respect can impact people's lives, especially those who might not feel they deserve it. If you find a person in need, I encourage you to extend a hand, both literally and figuratively. I'm confident this is nothing new to any of you. We would not be enjoying the support of this community without all of your ongoing efforts. You are the ones who work the double shifts and the overnights. You are the ones away from your families on holidays and weekends, and it is you who will be dealing with critical situations that will require unique skills. You are the sheepdogs, and you will be called upon to be both warriors and protectors. Remain ever vigilant. I know that any successes during my time as chief will be a credit to all of you as much as they will be to me. We should all strive to leave this department and this village better than we found it. I've told you before that I will attempt to earn your trust and respect every day. I know those things are not given, nor given lightly. I am honored to be one of you. So in conclusion, thank you again to the Village Board and the Village Administrator for giving me the opportunity to lead a tremendous group of people and to further serve a wonderful community. Good night, and God bless America.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you to family members, community members. Thanks to the folks from the police department downstairs and from our neighboring police departments. I see Chris Satria, I didn't call out, from Bronxville Police Department and a Pleasantville resident. A very happy night for the Village of Pleasantville, and we are honored to have all of you with us to launch Eric into what we expect will be an extremely successful tenure as the chief of the Village of Pleasantville Police Department. So we have very exciting activities to follow, including our audit report, and I encourage everyone of you to stay the whole time, but we won't be.
Run, run.
Take a two-minute break?
Welcome back. We had a brief break after swearing in our new police chief and are now back to regular life. A number of announcements to make, but perhaps I will wait to do that until the next major activity of our night, which is the folks from O'Connor Davies have completed our fiscal year audit for the year that ended May 31, 2016, and are here tonight to give Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Hough. I'm a partner with O'Connor Davies. I'm filling in for your partner, Rob Danielle, tonight, who unfortunately is home ill.
Thank you for pinch hitting.
Yeah, he has to pass on his apologies. All right. Somehow I have this effect on rooms all the time when it comes to.
That you do.
Don't take it personally, Chris, but thank you.
Rob put together a little PowerPoint for you so that you don't have to flip through the 100 pages of the financial statement. At some point, you know, I may refer back to it to point out something new this year. So what we're going to do is I'll do a quick summary of your responsibilities and our responsibilities during the course of an audit. Management's responsibilities is to select and implement appropriate accounting policies to make sure that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, GAAP. Establish and maintain internal controls appropriate for your village to check the compliance with laws, regulations, provisions, and contracts and agreements. And from our point of view, to provide all financial records and related information so we can conduct the audit. Our responsibility, first and foremost, for you is to form and express an opinion. And in the case of the village, you received an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that an auditing firm can give a client. So it's also known as a clean opinion, but is now known as unmodified. To do that, what we do is we perform tests on a sample basis of transactions that occurred during the course of the year, and we check those transactions for a number of items. One is to see if they're in compliance with contracts or any applicable laws, reimbursements, things like that. We also check to make sure that they follow your policies as they were outlined to us. If we find any deficiencies, we need to communicate them in writing to you as a board. We also, based again on the transactions that we test, we advise management as to be appropriateness of your accounting policies. If we come across any fraud or illegal acts, we have a responsibility to immediately report to the board. Nobody did bring any fraud to our attention, which is good news. We didn't encounter any significant difficulties during the conduct of our audit. And there are no uncorrected differences. In other words, during the course of the audit, if we had any adjusting entries, management either booked them, or we talked about them, and they were inappropriate, or they were waived, we would have to let you know. But in this case, any adjusting entries were posted by the administration. We had no disagreements with management, and at any point, our independence was not impaired. All right? The next section is a little snapshot of your general fund. This is how you did according to budget. If you want to follow along, it's on page 57 of the big book. But if you go to the bottom numbers, the first column, this is the budget as you adopted it, and you see the third number up from the bottom is $525,000 in brackets. When you prepared your budget, that's the amount of surplus that you utilized to help stabilize your taxes when you put together your budget. During the course of that year, you modified that budget, and you can see that you did raise it up to $785,000. So again, you kept the budget intact with revenues, and any new programs or expenses, you used that as your surplus. So if everything had gone perfect, you would have had a loss of $785,000. You didn't. You actually ran a surplus of $624,000. So instead of utilizing fund balance, you were able to add to your undesigned fund balance or unassigned fund balance. All right? How did you do that? When we go up to the top, you'll see on the revenue line, you originally adopted 13.8. During the course of the year, you modified it to 13.9. You actually received $14.04 million. So that $542,000 variance is made up of a few categories, mostly departmental income, where you exceeded your safety fees, your parking fees, and parks and rec fees. So you had $200,000 surplus on that line. Your license and permits also had a $90,000 surplus, and your state aid actually came in $90,000 higher, which the good news for the village was, most of that was on the mortgage tax line, which means you had quite a few real estate transactions, you know, more than you had planned. You also came in under budget on your expenditures. You can see the next column, about $800,000. That was spread across most of your departments. Everybody was to the good. Every category had a small surplus. But in general government support, you had about $134,000. That's, you know, the trustees, finance, treasurer, contingency. Public safety, you came in $85,000 under budget, and transportation was about $222,000 under budget. I think you're not really surprised by that. It was a very mild winter. Utility rates are down, fuel prices were down. And the good news was, for the first time in years, fringe benefits, you actually came in under on fringes because the rates for the pension systems did decline slightly.
Finally tipped.
Yeah. And I think the rates this year, they like to say they're going down again, but I believe they're really static. I think it's a drop of about three decimal places to the right. But, you know, they're able to say it's down.
I'll take it as opposed to the alternative.
Better than the 20% increases you faced for a few years. On the next page, what we tried to do is sum up some of your major revenues. You can see by the percentage on the bottom, if we just look at these six revenues, the account from is 90% of your revenue. All right? Property taxes, again, became a little over budget, about $36,000, and that's because you actually collected some linked with taxes. So your receivables actually went down, therefore you recognize the revenue that you had set aside in prior years deferred and uncorrected. Sales tax is the next line, fancy title, non-property tax distribution. That's your sales tax. And you see, that came in about $22,000 over budget. Again, the good news is, it's an economic indicator, it did come in over budget. I already spoke about parks and recs and parking, and your fines and forfeitures came in about $19,000 over. And mortgage tax, again, as I said, came in about $58,000 over. On the next slide, we put together a five-year trending for you, so you can see how these same revenues have done over the past five years. And again, with your sales tax, it's finally growing after recession. You're at $925,012, and you've had slight increases, except for 15, where you had a little drop, but you're back up to over $1 million, so you're leasing some growth. This goes throughout Westchester County. Your parks and rec fees have grown substantially. Parking is up about $100,000 over the five years, and from what I was told, I guess you had a small increase in your parking permits down at the train station, and that generated some extra revenue this year. Your bail money is fairly consistent. You know, you're in the $300,000, $350,000 range every year. And again, the good news is, your mortgage tax over the last five years has almost doubled. So yet, if you just look at it from one year to the next, really doesn't show you a trend. But if you look out five years, you got a pretty decent trend here in your group.
15 to 16 was big, though. $93,000 to $58,000, that was a pretty good jump.
Yeah, again, I don't have the details on that here, but you got to be careful. Sometimes it's one property that generates, you know, the jump. So you really want to see if it's kind of widespread over, you know, a lot of sales versus, you know, it was a one place where mortgage tax increased by $100,000 by its one transaction.
Do we get detail on that when that comes in, or we just get electronic funds transferred?
We just get the fund transfer.
Let me tell you how many parcels were transacted. I think they can do it, they can give you that.
You could give it, you get it, it's monthly, you could get it from the.
From the state finance department, maybe?
I think the local clerk.
It's the county.
The county collects it.
The county collects it, yeah.
Yeah. On the next page, again, we put down some of the major categories for your expenditures. Again, no surprise, police is your largest department, and even they came in $48,000 under budget this year. Transportation, like we said, was about $1.25 million under budget, which is pretty good. Again, mild winter, hopefully it stays that way. Your parks and recs came in under budget by about 55. And your retirement, your police and retired, employee and police retirement were down, about $150,000, again, mostly due to the decline in the rates from one year to the next. Health insurance, again, came in slightly under budget, and debt service, another major expense, basically came in on budget. On the next page, again, is a five-year trend. I think really the key to the trend is health insurance. You can see is costing the village, I mean, almost $200,000 increase over five years. That's a large burden to bear in the tax cap era. You can also see your retirement, although, you know, we indicated it's down, but it's still up from the 874. So you're still, again, up $300,000. Right there is a half a million dollars you had to absorb in the cap era, a 0.67% increase. So you had to squeeze every other part of your budget to make up for those items. And your transportation is up about $300,000 also over the course of time. On the next page is a five-year history of your fund balance. I think the good news, again, is the line that's probably most important to you is the unassigned line. That's how much you have available for emergencies and to help stabilize your budget. And you can see that it's grown from $2,605,000 five years ago to $3,505,000. So again, during the recession, during the tax cap era, you've been able to generate surpluses, you've added to your unassigned line, and that's going to help you going forward. On the smaller funds, the good news is, all of them generated some surpluses. Water fund had a surplus of about $366,000. Debt service, although, did decline in fund balance, that was planned, you appropriated that surplus to pay debt service in the general fund. Your pool fund has now been absorbed into the general fund, so it doesn't have fund balance anymore. And your refuse had a small $49,000 surplus. I do want to point out, in the actual financial statement, you can follow along with me or not, that's your choice, but this is the first year of the implementation where you have to absorb the asset of liability of the New York state pension system. So in your case, it's a liability. So basically, you've made all your payments, you've done everything you're supposed to do, but because the plan itself is underfunded, you have to put your proportion share on your balance sheet.
The New York state.
Employee plan.
State level.
Correct. Although it's a very well-funded plan compared to almost all other 50 states, I think. I think we were told it's like number four in the country. And if you look at page 44, you can see it's funded 90.7% for the ERS and 90.2% for the police and fire pension. So those are funded at a very high level. But you have to pick up that proportion share of that deficit on your books. It doesn't impact you at all, it only goes on the front statement, statement deposition similar to OPEB. So it's there. And if you look on the bottom of page 43, the middle column where it's the current assumption, shows that for the ERS, you picked up a $2.2 million liability, and for the police, you picked up 2.6. The reason these are important is they're changing the assumptions. They've changed them. Last year, they dropped them a half a point. There's talk of dropping them again.
They assumed, they assumed yield over time?
Yes. So if they drop it again, you'll see the column 1% decrease, you can see that that liability. Again, you do nothing, goes from 2.2 to 5 million, and from 2.6 to 5.8.
These are carried non-cash, right?
What's that?
These are not continued, these are not considered as cash items.
No.
Right.
And they're all, and again, they're only on the GASB 34, which is the entity-wide statement. They're not in your fund level. You don't have to raise money for your budget, like I said. You've paid your bill, you've given the retirement system everything, but depending on its yield, it either comes up short, or it comes up overfunded. Some of the schools, the TRS system, the teachers' retirement system, is actually overfunded at about 111%.
So what happens when that happens?
Again, you show an asset that you can't use.
Okay. So this is, what's our potential exposure in our, in our budget?
That, it's a good question, because that is why they want you to disclose this, is that when a plan is not 100% funded, it's an indicator that you'll either going to see stabilized rates or slight increases in the future. If that 90% were to drop to 89 or 88, because the, you know, retirement system didn't get the yield on the stock returns that they expected, you can anticipate an increase. You know, they, it's now a formula where they do a five-year blend, so they're trying to take out the peaks and valleys of the late 80s, early 90s, where it went down to zero, then went up to 10, went back down to zero. So it is a planning tool, but it's nothing that you control or can impact.
And in the hypothetical that the fund needed to generate more cash, it would do it by increasing the annual percentage we pay based on current payroll?
Correct.
There's never an assessment of any kind?
Never has been.
Yeah.
Never. Haven't heard any conversation regarding that.
Right. Okay.
Okay? So I just wanted to point that out, and then along that same subject, you're going to see a change again in two years. Because as we, and it's infinite wisdom, had you put the pension system on, probably Rob has spoken to me about OPEB and the liability you have out there for the future cost of health insurance. It's been phased in over 30 years. Well, in two years, you're going to have to record the balance of that liability, which will put those statement deposition in a bigger deficit.
And so I understand why those changes are required, but is that information meaningful and useful? For example, the bond rating agencies and the like, or, I mean, it's really.
Not at all.
It's simply a means of shining some light on the reality of how these things work?
Right. It always goes back to that debate between pay as you go, which is usually what government is. That's why bond issues are given for highway projects because they have a 30-year life. And, you know, OPEB is the same. You've always budgeted for your retirees' health insurance based on the active list. They would like you to show that future cost for the exact same reasons you just asked the question of, does that mean anything to me? And yes, it could mean future tax hikes if that number grows too large or too fast.
So back to the pension, we are not among the communities that elected to, quote, amortize their pension, in essence, borrow from the state and not pay some of its current amount due. In the case of the communities or the county where that was done, where does that liability show up?
Two places. One is, it actually shows up as a liability due to the retirement system. That's a true liability, the retirement system, because you basically took out a five-year loan, and you pay interest on that.
You borrow from the IRA.
Right. So that money shows up as a liability on a separate line. When they get their calculation of the pension liability, you know, each one is unique to everybody else, that then goes, just like yours, whatever portion of the plan's liability goes on.
Is allocated.
The deferred outflows, deferred inflows, and a blended line. But the actual liability for those who amortized, which a lot of municipalities did, is a separate line and stands out.
Correct.
It actually goes in the debt payment schedule in the back, you know, where we footnote out the debt and list all the payments you have to make. That would actually go back there as a scheduled payment plan.
And that is a thing that rating agencies will look at.
That they look at. This pension, OPEB, they don't look at, because again, that's pay as you go, you got a bill, you paid it. And what your scenario was, you got a bill and didn't pay it. You know, you took the lower payment and said, I'm going to spread it out over time.
We did pay it, just to be clear to the community.
Your question was.
We did, that was my question. But we, we paid the pension bill in full every year and did not, quote, amortize it, which was, was a means of softening the blow, but.
Correct.
We follow the guideline we always follow, which is that we pay things in the year they're due.
And I think that's reflective in your fund balance. You have a very healthy fund balance, you generated a surplus. Again, in tough economic times, you were able to hold down your expense budget and manage it well so that you could put money aside in your surplus for future budgets. Okay? If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them. If you think of them later, feel free to call in the office, where I will be back to you as soon as we can. And again, he apologizes for not being.
Understood.
That's better.
Much appreciated.
Nicely done.
I have a good question.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is more for you guys or for you, but, and I probably should know the answer to this, but do we consider expected debt service as part of the assigned fund balance?
What do you mean by expected?
So we know that our debt service next year will be X, right? Do we consider that assigned?
No.
Oh, or, right.
That's a typical budget.
As, you know, like the $769,000 we have assigned in '16, right, for subsequent years expenditures? We wouldn't consider debt service as part of that.
No. Your debt service, your debt service line is its own budget line.
Right.
And you raise tax on an annual basis to pay the bonds.
So it doesn't come out of the fund, right? All right. Good, I'm sorry, I know that is a thing I should have totally figured out. Because I, I, we've had this conversation before, I always get confused between the municipal accounting world in terms of deferred revenue and expenses versus.
Right.
Right.
We're a hybrid.
Or, yeah.
We're a little bit of cash, a little bit of modified.
Because I keep looking for like the depreciation.
Only on the front.
Right.
Only on the statement in that position.
Right.
And inside the footnotes, if you were interested in depreciation, there is a whole schedule of depreciation in the footnotes. Yep, where it does it year by year and by category. Okay?
So you're, you're not paid to be a prognosticator, but do you have any forward-looking thoughts about what the environment is looking like?
I think, unfortunately, I think for municipalities, the cap is a reality and is going to stay for a while. And given, you know, the real estate market, and you can't raise property taxes, you're going to have trouble with mortgage. going to have trouble with mortgage tax, it's not going to be as robust as it was fifteen years ago. You're going to rely more on departmental income, and you're going to, you know, fees for the services that, you know, people utilize and make sure that you don't generate losses like people did in the past, like a lot of parks and recs programs, used to be a lot of, you know, county, town money, village money. Now they're looking more to make sure some of them are sustainable by increasing those fees. I think you're lucky in the area we live in, you know, Westchester County always has a very robust economy, it's proximity to New York City, the train station, always keeps your housing prices at a, at a good level. I don't believe you dropped significantly as some other communities did during the recession. So all those things work to your advantage. And again, you've done a great job managing the budget and creating a surplus. And, you know, as you plan the use of that surplus, it's going to help you get from year to year with this cap.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Again, we thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Chris, I don't know, I do have one question, I don't know if you can help with this, or maybe Marion, Noreen can, but we would expect in the next coming year or two to be dealing with that Cadillac tax with respect to health insurance.
Yes.
Can you just give us an overview of what that might look like?
What it would look like is, I'm not an insurance expert. I do know that if, in NISHIP, the current projections of the NISHIP plan are indicating that it will end up being subjected to the Cadillac, as they call it, tax, which is, you know, a fee or an add-on that you're going to have to pay because it's an enriched plan. I believe, and again, you have to talk to your insurance broker, I believe it was originally for eighteen, I think I heard it's twenty-twenty now.
Has it been pushed back?
Right.
Has it been pushed back?
Yeah, it's been pushed back. I think they're trying to give insurance plans the ability to try to rework their benefits to try to get the cost under the projected level that, for lack of better terms, that penalty would be assessed against.
And is that an IRS penalty? Is, whose penalty is that Cadillac tax?
It's theirs, it's.
So, I mean, it'll all change now with changing administration probably too.
Right.
We don't, we don't know where it's going.
And again, they're looking at the Affordable Care Act and.
Right.
Trying to determine what is going to be the new future of that.
Okay. Fair enough. But I don't have to worry about it next fiscal year.
It's an expensive, it could be a very expensive proposition.
Well, we thought it was at one point in time, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, I came, I come from your environment, I used to work for a county, and I believe the estimate that we were given in my last year was it could be as high as two or three thousand dollars.
Per capita.
Per account, yeah.
Per full-time employee.
So, I mean, that's a significant amount of money.
Sure it is.
But I think NISHIP is working very hard to get their structure under that level for you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So the, these positive results obviously devolve to the good leadership of Patty Dwyer and extremely good management of our finance department led by Mary Schwartz and her deputy Noreen Riegen. It's a pleasure to work with all of you, and the results are here in black and white. So thank you for that.
Great job.
We're delighted to present this report.
Great job, thank you so much.
I can't thank my team enough.
Yeah.
Oh, try.
How they keep, well, I will. How they keep me focused and how they keep, you know, this administrative aspect of, of our local government in check. It's very hard to deal with financial administration. There are just so many variables, and as much as, you know, we deal with these externalities, I just, the intuitiveness of these two women is priceless. I mean, they, they are on, they've got their finger on the pulse of, of everything that matters here, and it shows. So I want to thank both of you again for being, both, both of you are both my right hand. It's almost impossible to think you could both be there, but you are, and I, I can't thank you enough for all the support I get.
Well, likewise for all of us. It's a, not the situation in every community. I, I discuss these things with colleagues who say, oh my God, and I say, that's not a problem I have, so really happy to.
Consistently, the reports that come in from everyone that comes here, each of us is just so professional, so well-prepared, it's greatly appreciated by all.
Thank you. And just so you know, I mean, the rules, Marion will tell you, Noreen will tell you, the rules of the game change almost, almost every day for them.
I think too, no surprises.
They have to be continually educated.
With you. You know, you're always coming to us, sort of giving us the heads up.
It's, it's not, it's not a static work environment for them, it's very fluid, and they have to stay on top of their game, and they do a great job. Thank you for recognizing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming.
Okay, so we'll move on. Thanks.
All right. Back, back to announcements. I had a few general reports to make. The first, as you may have heard at the outset, is a week from today, Monday, the twenty-first, at seven PM here in Village Hall, we have a public hearing on our proposed revised master plan. So anybody who's interested in that, Patty, is that up on the web now?
It is.
Okay. So if you go to Pleasantville-ny.gov, click in the left-hand column to the master plan folder, you'll see a whole bunch of documents, but the most recent one is the current draft of our proposed targeted update of our comprehensive plan.
It's under News and Announcements right now.
And not under the master plan?
No, I'll have to link it.
Can we link it there?
Because it's Dropbox.
Because people, I think, would go there. So, under News and Announcements now. At any rate, it's a, a big fat document. If you're interested in the, the key takeaway about how things might change, the last section on recommendations may be the place to focus. It presages a couple of potential changes in the way the village might be zoned downtown, including some suggestions that in some areas where the current maximum three-story height might be changed to allow four stories. That, at the moment, again, all in draft, would be areas of the downtown that are more than a hundred and fifty feet away from a residentially zoned area. So for example, on Washington Avenue, which is currently zoned for a maximum three-story height, that proposal, if enacted, might permit four stories on the train track side of Washington, but keep it at three on the Grove Street side because of the adjacency to the residential neighborhood. Likewise, Wheeler could go to four stories and the area, the post office, the building on the Rock, the lane lot, all of those areas could go to four stories as well. There are also some schematic plans in there, some of which you've seen in the past, for changes in roadways, changes in pedestrian crossings, changes in the way our intersections work in and around the downtown, and some schematic plans for how Memorial Plaza might look if it were to be revised. Longstanding discussion about trying to create a green space at the north end of the plaza, and some renewed discussion about the possibility of selling a parcel on the south end in the, across the street from Tudor Time, as a potential site for a new building that might be sold to a private developer to both to generate some money to feed into some of the other plan improvements, to add some to the tax rolls, and also to potentially improve that corner. So all of those things are in draft, but they are things that are definitely of interest to the board. We've had some feedback in the course of our public sessions, as well as feedback that has come to all of us individually about aspects of those ideas that people feel is a good idea, a bad idea. Happy to get any of that input. Monday, a week from today, would be a great opportunity to offer it. It'll be televised as well as taped. Most of what we've done so far is archived and available on demand at PCTV seventy-six dot org. Thank you, Shane, and your team. Great opportunity to read more about it. So if these are matters of interest to you, now is the time, because the board is headed towards tweaking the recommendations and adopting this plan sometime within the next month or two. Couple of event announcements. The holiday sing-along and lighting ceremony on Manville Road at Great Oak Lane is Wednesday, November thirty, at seven PM sharp, so make a note of that. Farm Market will have its last outdoor market this coming Saturday, the nineteenth. It's closed on the twenty-sixth, the weekend of Thanksgiving, and then it reopens in the first week of December, on December third, the winter market inside Pleasantville Middle School, thanks to the school district for assisting with making that possible. So that's the update on the farm market. Patty has been in touch with the folks at DOT and Echo, which is the contractor working on the sawmill. They are going to have a few days at least of revived detours.
We thought it would be this evening, but for some reason it was postponed. They're going to start again this Thursday night and do some paving on, or actually do some guardrail replacement under these overpasses where they've already replaced bridge decks. So they have a little more work to do. Then they're coming back to do Grant Street for us.
So when they make these detours, will be back to the circumstance where people are fed off at Grant and go down Marble and get back on?
Correct.
But that wouldn't be for a long period of time, I would imagine.
No.
Is it overnight, are they doing it?
I think four, five nights is what they envision.
Just a few nights. It should have been this entire week, but they're, they're delayed now again, but.
So when you say at night, it's after nine, or?
Yes.
Okay. So it wouldn't interfere with rush hour traffic?
Correct.
Or anything? Okay.
So at any rate, let's.
That would be good, if we could put that on the website when, when it does happen, so people know.
Just like the spring detour, they'll.
Yeah.
Route down on.
Especially if it's after hours when people aren't expecting it, if they're.
Okay.
And then, as many of you and certainly anyone who lives on that side of the sawmill has seen, Echo, as part of their agreement with us, has provided a pedestrian walkway that's outboard of the guardrail on the little bridge that goes over the sawmill right at the crossing by Grant Street. So pedestrians now, for the first time in anyone's memory, are able to get to the crossing area at the sawmill and Grant Street without sharing the bridge with cars. So that's happy news. And that little spur of Grant Street that feeds into Pleasant Avenue is going to be realigned. The shape of that has already become apparent with the work done so far. When do you think that opens, did you say, Patty?
By Thanksgiving, we're hoping.
Okay. So that will also solve some longstanding problems.
Which is next week.
Over there. Is it? Oh my gosh, it's crazy.
I can't believe it.
Last piece, and I won't go into detail because I think it's worth a longer discussion, but went up to Albany last night and spent last night and today, the New York Conference of Mayor's Legislative Priorities Meeting, and there were forty-five policy issues for discussion. And at the end of that, we all cast a ballot, and ten of them bubbled to the top as the key priorities for the New York Conference of Mayors to tackle in the upcoming legislative session, to try to get some laws added or changed. Again, go into it in a little bit more detail, but as you might imagine, one of them, which has been a perennial subject ever since the tax cap was created, was a plea, a request, a lobby that we are going to undertake with the state to modify some aspects of the tax cap. It is described as a two percent tax cap. It's in fact two percent or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. In recent years, that has been point six, point four, point eight, really, really very small numbers. Everybody's glad to see low tax increases, all of us included, and we work hard to achieve that, but all kinds of our expenses, especially pension, healthcare, et cetera, don't respect the laws of inflation because they march to a different drummer. So that has been an extremely big problem. And a core problem for municipalities is that capital costs are included in the tax cap. So when municipality elects to improve its roads, its sewer system, its water system, all of those things are included in the tax cap, and that creates a powerful disincentive for communities to do the right thing in rebuilding their infrastructure. Happy to say that I think we've done pretty well with that, and this community has been foresighted about that for, for several generations of this board, and has left us in a pretty good situation. Not every community's in that same circumstance, but perversely, annoyingly, shockingly, outrageously, school districts and the state itself exempt capital costs from the tax cap, and yet, for municipalities, they're included. So why the rules would be different for us than for school districts and the state itself is hard to say, and worth noting that the state, the makers of all of these rules supposedly live within a two percent tax cap, but they ignore the inflation part, so their tax levy can increase by two percent, and they claim they're within the cap, even though we are restricted to a much smaller number. So that's maybe issue number one. It's been issue number one for a few years running. The visit to Albany last year in February left all of us without any optimism that anybody was even going to listen, but we're going to try again, so. More on that later. Anybody else have announcements?
I do. We are having an election in the Village of Pleasantville next March twenty-first, and there are two seats up, which one of them is mine, and I'll only speak for mine, but I have decided not to run for reelection, so I wanted to put that out there so people can step up and get involved and maybe get involved in this great group of people and great government and do something for the village. So I'd be happy to speak with anybody if they're interested and go through what is expected of you as a, as a trustee, and you can email me at our, our email address is here at thevillage@mberard@pleasantville-ny.gov. Thank you, Steve, for that. And so please, I urge anybody who has any questions, you would have to file a petition with a hundred signatures to the clerk. You can contact the village clerk as well, and she can give you more information, but by February fourteenth, those petitions would have to be filed, and the election would be March twenty-first. So I wanted to give everybody ample time to consider it and, you know, sit down, have a few conversations with any of us. I'm sure anybody on this board would be happy to talk to you. And, you know, come out and support your village and the future of, of the village. So that's my announcement.
But you do not have a nine-year trustee, especially a nine-year trustee named Mindy Berard, leave without plenty to be said, and there will be plenty of opportunity to do that, and we look forward to it. But thank you for reporting this as early as you did, for exactly the reason you described. It would be great if anyone who's interested in thinking about running for the board, contact any one of us. More people thinking about that would be a great blessing. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, and we'll have more to say on that soon, or not so soon, but.
Not so soon.
Coming up.
It's a while. March, long time.
Mindy's comments remind me, maybe Steve, you should report our new email system and our new email addresses, since you're the guy that shuffled it that into being.
Sure. So the Village of Pleasantville now has rolled out a cloud-based email system from Microsoft Office three sixty, which gives each one of us a village-based or a village domain-based email address. So each trustee has an email address, it's the first initial of their first name, and then their last name, at pleasantville-ny.gov. We also, I think, have rolled out new email addresses for everyone who works for the village, including the administration, the Public Works guys, all that. Basically, all follow the same convention. I believe you guys are, your roles at, right?
We have both. We have first initial, last name, and we also have administrator@, village clerk@, building inspector@.
And is that just you guys, or is that, is that all the department?
All the department has.
So they also have that as well?
Police chief@.
Looking for, you know, getting an email over to Patty, it'd be either, you know, P-Dwyer@ or it would be administrator@pleasantville-ny.gov. So we're very excited about it. It unifies everyone's email addresses under one roof. We have all sorts of good stuff we're going to be looking into, shared calendars and office applications. I'm very excited.
We are too. Thank you for that.
Thank you for that, Steve. We, up until this transition, were part of a shared services agreement with the county providing some IT services. And much as we appreciate the assistance of the county on some subjects, this wasn't an area in which they were au courant. Would that be a fair statement?
That would be a good.
And it was extremely difficult for us to manage Pleasantville-NY.gov emails in our own lives on smartphones and the like. Now, all resolved. Can we then hot-link each of the board members to their email address on the village board page so that anybody who wants to reach any one of us can just?
I did.
Click it. No, it's not live right now. I'm not seeing that. Not to be addressed now, but take a look.
All right, I'll check.
And just to your quick, to your point, Mayor, we swapped these systems out with no marginal cost. So, the same system we were using, which did not meet our needs by a long stretch, is now, for more or less the same amount of money, swapped out with one that is much, much more appropriate and powerful and will morph with the times and the technology to keep us up to date.
It's been great already. And then, in the category of our advancing technology, in work session, we started the evening with a demonstration from the folks at Novus Agenda, which is an online agenda system that we are going to start using for village board, as well as other boards and commissions, which will create an entirely online set of agendas and the backup material. And it will mean members of the public can take a look at that stuff, including the backup if it's of interest to them, quite easily. You can search current and back data easily, and each of the board members has a login that allows us to annotate and mark and add questions and include notes. So, all kinds of progress on the techno front, and happy to see that rolled out. Thanks to Patty and Judy for working on that so far. We may have a few bumps in the road, but it looks like it's pretty straightforward.
You're welcome.
All right, anybody else? All right. With that, any comments from the public? 769-1677. All right.
Do you want to do the first one, or?
I will. Perhaps we should have done this when Eric was still here. Resolution number 183. Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Eric Rutzner provisionally to the position of police chief effective November 14, 2016, at a salary of $154,129. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Happy day for the Village of Pleasantville. 184, Steve.
Resolve that pre-check register dated November 14th, 2016, covering check numbers 3076 through 3133 and 34759 through 84764, has been reviewed and they are hereby approved as listed below, from the general fund, the water fund, the capital fund, the refuse fund, and the trust and agency fund, excuse me, a total of $502,844.80.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the check register? All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Mindy, 185.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Anjali Purisatoff.
Satoff.
Satoff. I was close. I was very close. To the Planning Commission effective November 14th, 2016, term to expire April 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anjali is a resident Bedford Road, a PhD environmental scientist, and the parent of a child in each of the three Pleasantville schools. Thank you so much for stepping forward to take over this role on the Planning Commission. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Colleen.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Building Inspector 210, the Plan Review Institute in Sturbridge, Mass. from December 5th through December 9th, 2016, at a cost of $820.
Is there a second?
Second.
Looks like a good plan, a good event. This is Robert Coy.
Yes, thank you. The International Codes Council has changed many things.
They've adopted the international code.
They have, and, you know, we really want to be ahead of the curve here with respect to interpretation and reader plans. A lot of the architects are having difficulty with the code right now, too. So, Robert had asked to go to the school, and I think we need to make that investment.
Because they've, New York State has adopted it with some provisions removed.
Yes, that's right.
Typical New York State.
And they remove provisions that, you know, are, you know, like sprinklers in new developments, which makes no sense, especially when there's no water source, you know, public water source, so.
All right, sounds like a good plan. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. 187, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the 2015-16 Snow and Ice Amendment B agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe this?
Well, it won't snow this year.
In which case, we can just table this.
Yeah. We have an opportunity to be compensated for the work we do for state DOT on state highways in the village, one being Route 117, the other being Route 141 Broadway. So, we're responsible for maintaining those roads free of snow and ice, and we get a pre-fixed amount of money from the state based on lane miles and based on a certain formula. They do adjust that if the winter is more aggressive than they think originally, but right now, we're looking at an estimated expenditure of about $16,300 that we would be reimbursed.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. Steve, 188.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints the following library trustees, Robert Huster, effective November 14th through December 31st, 2016, and Kathleen Williamson, effective November 14th through December 31st, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, this is a.
I can explain. The, when I was at the library board meeting, they were notified by the Westchester Library system that some of their trustees hadn't signed, hadn't taken the oath. So, I asked the clerk, Judy, thank you very much, to check into it for us, if how are Pleasantville appointees on the library board, because it's the Mount Pleasant Public Library, the Village of Pleasantville gets appointees, and so does the town of Mount Pleasant. And Judy found that these two volunteers, Robert Huster and Kathleen Williamson, needed to be reappointed so they could come in and take their oath of office, only to be reappointed again at the end of their term, which is.
January.
January. So, it's just a, you know, a formality that we have to make.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Mindy, 189. You got the fun one.
Right, so this is a notice of a public hearing. So, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, November 28th, to hear comments as it pertains to a local law amending Chapter 173 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-65, no standing certain hours, and Section 163-66, time limit parking on Academy Street as follows. The no standing certain hours is Section 173-65, on the west side of Academy Street, from 7:30 AM to 8:30 AM and 2:30 PM to 3:30 PM, Monday through Friday, except holidays. And that's from a .56 feet north of Bedford Road to a .244 feet north of Bedford Road. And we're going to change that, the same side of Academy Street, the west side, and it would be the same hours, but it will be from a .56 feet north of Bedford Road to a .204 feet north of Bedford Road. So, it's less 40 feet. And then, Section 173-66, time limit parking on the west side of Academy Street, five-minute parking from 8:30 AM to 2:30 PM and 3:30 PM to 8:00 AM, Monday through Friday, from 56 feet north of Bedford Road to a .244 feet north of Bedford Road. It's to change that again to the 204 feet north of Bedford Road. So, that's what the public hearing will be on, is changing this by 40 feet.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is involving the handicapped spaces.
Yeah, the handicap law that was passed at the last board meeting resulted in some cascading effects on the parking on that street that we didn't recognize. Unfortunately, there were other sections of the code that were impacted by creating the additional space, and here they are. So, we have to correct that and adjust the distances at which these sections of the code would now apply because we created a handicap space where there were regulations. So, basically, we have to change those regulations.
So, it sounds like to me, by adding those new handicap spaces, we have to shorten up the five-minute park.
That is exactly right.
That's kind of it.
That's exactly right. And I didn't see that the first time around because the code is so.
Why do we need five-minute restriction in the middle of the night?
I, that's, you know, that's what's on the books now. I don't know why it was put there.
So, I mean, in the context of.
I don't know what the history of it was.
There may be a reason for it, but in the context of the public hearing, we could loosen that if we were so inclined. Were you noticing?
Well, you would do more than that area, more than 40 feet. You'd do the whole 200.
Where do you see it in the middle of the night?
It's the last night, it's 3:30 PM to 8:00 the next morning.
No, 2:30 PM to 3:30, and 3:30 PM. Oh, 2:8 AM, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Can I read that?
All right, so we could.
I would take a look at the history of it first.
I mean, there may be a reason for it, having something to do with, I don't know what, but it's worth looking into. We certainly don't want to cause another unintended problem, so.
Well, people going to the train, or, I don't know. I don't know if they leave their car there, and I don't know.
All right, all in favor? A motion approved. That is a motion to hold the public hearing at the next meeting. 190, Colleen.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Holy Innocence Church to close the Tonkins Avenue parking lot on Tuesday, November 29th, at 4:00 PM for a special event.
Is there a second?
Second.
Gives us an opportunity to be reminding everyone again that.
It's their lot.
It's actually the church's lot. We use it and maintain it as part of a generous arrangement that Holy Innocence has allowed us all these many years, and so they're asking to take back their own lot for this brief period. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 191, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the treasurer to close capital account H5197.201/16420, DPW equipment front-end loader, as it has a zero balance on the account.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is one of the more controversial acts of the evening. All in favor? A motion approved. 192, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, October 24th, 2016, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections on the minutes?
None.
All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. That's the end of our resolutions. Any new business, new comments, new announcements?
It's next meeting, VI, Youth Recognition?
Yes, Youth Recognition.
The 28th, right?
Yes.
Right. So, just remind everybody that our next regular meeting is two weeks from today, the 28th, and that's our Youth Recognition Evening, as well as various other things going on. But in between this coming Monday, the 21st, here in this room, is the public hearing